..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Sure, and I guess, so after the last meeting, I, we put together the Goldman check as I sent those out. And so what I've included here are some comments I already received back from Charles that he had outlined. And we can, we can work through those as we, as we move on each of these. And then there were some questions about Tree City. So I just included the work that we had done to date in, in the application because we had to put together tree's planning, resources, spend, money, etc., etc.
Okay. That's it. That's it.
Okay.
And that's it. How we all, after a few minutes, you know, we'll talk about, um, what was, you know, what did we do as well? Finding commission and just cracked us. And, um, you know, I think this was one of those where we, we, we worked at the, the high policy level and then finally identified methods to increase public outreach. And then as staff, we can take that back in front of what was what we can implement and what methods we can use that we, that we can implement immediately or those come longer term goals that do require some type of a signature that needs some budget for moving forward.
So I guess we, we could open up there if you'd like to show the first one and what everyone thinks of. You having that as a goal and an objective for this year, it seemed like there wasn't consensus last time. Realizing that we're gonna, we're gonna wait to do the details to bring that back with you.
I think one of the aspects that we, we're thinking of when we talked about public involvement was to be able to downplay efforts of the city vision and urban remotes in our programs.
Well, and I guess, is that more, I'm sorry, is that more under two with the visioning or are we talking more up? Definitely those are two separate projects, two separate tasks. One is how can we just overall increase our public involvement, communication, education, and outreach? From planning, from Planning Commission, uh, land use issues. It's not broader Public Involvement Officer for the city out of my department. So the first one I see is land use related or building, primarily land use. Whereas the second one is more of a community vision outreach process for an actual project with a scope and a product to be created. I guess that's where I would kind of differentiate the two. So I'm not sure how much public outreach, urban renewal and city vision are actually gonna do. Whereas we would be taking that on more for our notifications or, you know, do we, do we, do we as planning commissioners go to some of the CIC meetings or to some of the neighbors? I mean, there's all kinds of different avenues we can, we can, we can look at in terms of increasing outreach to the community for planning related.
Basically, we wanna think of what the drivers are for the outreach. And probably said people from the planning commission list might be a focal point for getting at the Bible, figuring out, uh, the woman who came to us from a couple of weeks ago and talked about, um, membrane structure and everything. And apparently it doesn't need to have the code. And
He doesn't need the code.
Doesn't need the standard of the code. It's pretty black and white.
We can't have those. So I mean, it's not intended. It's, you, you don't have it or you didn't have it.
So we have those things. We have, uh, the sign, um, we have signed code. And you know that there are probably signs in the community that are not up to code. Uh, but I'm wondering whether problems you see in the community department that might help us from target, uh, issues that would be useful for one of us.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, what we, you know, and once again, we have, we have two reasons. There one is almost a code requirement, code enforcement aspect where we, we have an adopted code and it says X, Y, Z. You know, what we, what we spend a great deal of our time on are surgeries, sidewalks, through code enforcement, membrane structures. From a policy standpoint, we're, I think, you know, things have slowed down quite a bit. And I guess we'd have to go back and do a little bit of work to try and glean what are the concerns that we're hearing in terms of implementation of the code that we have on the books, whether that be building design, uh, street design, uh, tree preservation or tree mitigation. You know, because we tend to get very general comments that aren't really code specific. It's more of a critique or a, um, a, a very general narrative about the way to do it.
About my neighbor's messy yard we never mowed.
Or, you know, um,
Sorry, it didn't offer to mow it for me.
You know, it's, it's owned, it's owned our five. I don't like, I don't, I don't like the size of the lots.
Yeah.
You know, well, it is, I mean, there's certain, there's some that you just can't, they're
My neighbor and I both have partitioned our backyards and shared a flylot to build a third house.
I, I can certainly that we talked about it at CIC that, that I offered that we really had about me tracking up maybe something planning for future sponsors that we could do sort of half a, you know, what is, what is the land use plan process about? You know, what are the types of things that you need to be looking at when you're looking at a land use application? Or my original goal was to involve the land use chairs of neighborhood associations. But I think in some cases, some of the presidents need some of that information too.
Some kind of the same person.
Uh, yeah, I'd say the same person.
Well, they're like
You know, they have a whole day going, you know, or believe the Orient Cities. But I think that there were probably about three cities at once that we could boil this down to, you know, invite people to attend and make it very informal. You know, I'm, I'm gonna volunteer Paul. Cause he's a planner that we could, you know.
No, he's not here. And that's not worth it. That's not worth it.
I'll volunteer Paul, Paul to myself. Uh, game is pretty good. I mean, we could all talk about some aspect of this to, to, to say, here's the things that you could do as, as a neighborhood or as neighbors to make yourself more effective. And you are number one, testifying for the city commission, number two, testifying for the planning commission or, you know, maybe any place else. The thing that I think is important to get across to people is the time you come in and talk to, to decision makers, it's not when you're off with the board. Hopefully you're a little bit more up on what's going on. And, you know, you know, you don't get that much attention here, but when everybody rushes in and says, oh my God, you know, this, we do this. But no longer do you know it and you have ever start going, no, we don't do this. So, you know. So you wanna keep those, you wanna keep some of that down by saying, here's kind of how you look at this. Here's kind of how you do this. And it's, and people understand that it's real, very simple. When we break it down, it could be, I think it could be very beneficial. And we could do something like that, you know, maybe once a year to be helpful and, you know, maybe people want more than that. You know, I've been talking to Paul that for about this for over three years. You know, and then maybe there's another portion of that same solution where it's just sort of a, well, what are, what are the community vulnerability issues in this scenario? Like things that, you know, is it, is it weeds? Is it armpit dogs? Is it, is it, you know, abandoned cars? I mean, those are some, some cat findings that don't directly relate to what we do as the city makers and planning vision. But they do relate generally to community vulnerability which sort of all adds up and gets up to what we deal with.
You know, my, my first vision when I saw this list was that item number one was spent a subject at a time. But then when I met through the whole list, including the items under the, the other programs, um, it occurred to me that number one really applies to everything. It applies to it in different fashions, but really, I think at different degrees, uh, the, the public needs to have an understanding of what's going on. I think Carter's example on the latest union of membrane structure is that typically, my observation over the years is that most people they, they could care less until something comes along that affects them. And the two most common questions that I hear is, do I need to permit for that? You know, I just, I'm gonna do this or whatever. And as an architect, I get lots of plans asked to me. I'm thinking about, you know, so I need to permit for that? And then the other is, what am I allowed to do with my property? You know, can I?
It's my property. I mean, tell me.
Can I add on that, you know? And I, I get questions from friends about, am I allowed to do this, you know, on my property? And so I, I think those two issues could be kind of a springboard for, like Denise was talking about where we could maybe periodically, uh, if we had a right agenda, advertise that we're, we're gonna have a little community education session about these issues. And just advertise that we've got these three issues we're gonna review from the planning crew. And with the, the aid of the city attorney and, and your, your staff, we could just maybe have a, an open forum. For people, if you've got questions about your property, what you're required to do or what you're allowed to do. You know, you can just field those questions.
Or more like, maybe even more like an open house.
Yeah, it's, it's less, less fun, but more like an open house where, you know, all the Christmas cookies and shit.
Now, so you're not waiting, like I was saying, for somebody to talk to you or you already know upfront that this area is being subdivided and the plan for that area is gonna be single family houses. Or, you know, we've got this big apartment built, you know, in there. And when people are kind of scratching their head, what am I allowed to do here? What are these people allowed to do there?
I think having one question like that, like, you know.
That we can actually answer.
Yeah, exactly. I think the question about what requires permission, like I did to, yesterday, my neighbor came over and she says, I'm thinking about doing such and such, um, and adding these limits. Do you think I need to permit for that? I said, oh, yeah.
So are you guys envisioning, uh, from within a formal planning commission hearing meeting or something separate and aside as in an open house?
Well, kind of a wide agenda.
So an actual shoot meeting?
Yeah.
Well, you know, we've had a lot of, uh, meetings that got canceled due to nothing on the agenda. So we knew that, we just had a two or three weeks in advance item. We could just say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna hit this item, you know, that subject.
Well, but what do we do? And one of the methods for outreach, we only know two, three weeks in advance, if you might consider. If we wanted to do this right, my opinion would be let's set it quarterly or, or, you know, quite a year or something and advertise it where folks know instead of just saying, hey, it looks like we've got a light agenda in three weeks, let's throw this on there. But I don't think that gets us set for that public outreach.
I think that needs to be an outline.
That's right. If, if it's gonna be a true open house and we want people to feel like they can attend and, and know about setting agenda, we set the open house and we advertise it and, and set, and maybe that is, that's the meeting or that's the bulk of that meeting. It's about time. Or maybe it means it's, it's separate and aside from our formal meeting as well. We have those as well. So that's what I'm wondering. I, I'd imagine an open house is something you advertise well in advance and then, and it's its own entity. And that night for
Well, I mean, if you were, does, they pass some of their work session meetings ahead of their meeting, but they've had a pretty steady agenda, they've had a pretty steady agendas. I could see it where, where it's just like, if we know now that we don't have anything on the agenda for the end of July, we could do something for like an hour and a half and advertise it now, get it out there. I know it's summer, but, you know, cities want city online and other neighborhood association stuff and just get it out there. And so if we're gonna have a topic, an open house session about, you know, what requires it.
Yeah.
Well, I tend to agree. Yeah, I think if, if we set it on the agenda, then if we knew that was gonna take an hour of the agenda, then when Tony's scheduling what's going on on that agenda, he would never schedule anything that was gonna be too heavy for that.
Although some things are time sensitive and
And those are the night we're here late.
But would we have city staff and all the people that are here to testify about a thing wait for us to go through the first hour of? So all the citizens who are here to hear about how I can do a permit have to wait till 11:30 that night to hear it and go to work the next morning? Well, I'm just saying.
Never do know. But what about the footside of that? Maybe we do the open house from six to seven and then start the formal.
I mean, I'm just, you know, looking at it as, as going to be a formal agenda item. If it is, is it the first thing? Like, did you know your commission? Or is it the last thing, which means we've lost the audience and they're gonna watch it online? So why not just pre-record something to put online?
And that's where I, I think it's an open house that we want folks to come to and you carve out that first. And I would even say, let's do six to seven, but I like the earlier meeting. Some people don't.
Well, that'd be separate then.
Yeah, that's right. Then it's the planning commission open house and maybe it's not formal business. It's a listening hour and we have
That discussion.
A discussion and presentation and we're not doing anything that takes formal testimony until our actual mission meeting.
I would see that working.
And, and we're close, okay, I'd like to see is work closely with our neighborhood organization. What are those issues that I'm thinking about? You know, the past long.
Well, ideally, if, if we could encourage state representatives, I mean, it's just a neighborhood committees to be here that night. But they could go back to the neighborhood committees and say, hey, this is what I found out. You're not allowed to build a membrane structure. You know, it's, it's prohibited. And all these people that are going, huh, why can't you just sit down and buy one of those down at the, you know, local stores?
We tried once about twenty years ago, we sent out notices to a lot of lumber companies that sell these things and say, you know, you could put this disclaimer up, you can stay by it. And we thought a little bit of success with that. But it's just like anything, you know, people do well on the weekend or they'll go down to, you know, Better Bill barns and have one schlepped in, not thinking that they would be, you know, any kind of commit. So it's that kind of, you know, thing. I mean, I don't know how those people would be annoying about, well, what does the planning commission do? But how we could do like a smish deal on that.
The other thing I was thinking about that, I would like to see in the end, how to fight in our, our meetings are actual report times or reports from the neighborhood associations. So I either make it available with however many minutes for the, the presidents to come report to us what's going on. And also from our end that we announce, you know, those meetings. And I think we have been doing that to some extent. But announce those meetings and what is upcoming to maybe in a specific neighborhood association or, or what's upcoming on our agenda that would affect that neighborhood association. And maybe you wanna go to that meeting this, you know, Tuesday, the blah, 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 or whatever it is. And put that as just a standing item on our agenda.
I often talk about possibly even maybe trying to do a work session where we didn't have anything specific that we could, you know, figure out where a couple of neighbors could be in together. And we could do something, you know, in there for, I mean, we'll often lead over, I mean, we can easily lead here, but we need to over in the art station. And people know, you know, from there, but it appears there's, you know, there's a classification on that.
How many people should show up?
It really depends. Sometimes we have ten, sometimes we have thirty.
That's pretty good though.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had less than ten and average is probably fifteen if you go across the whole.
Last month, we, um, pulled up the entire table and all the chairs were on the edge.
But Doug was supposed to be there.
I think River Crest had to have Doug.
So I mean, part places in turmoil where they're also.
I don't know, can you get this?
I, I guess my concern is, this, this all sounds really great. How many hours of time are we willing to budget into Tony's staff to make things happen for him to relocate a meeting to a completely different place with all the recording equipment that it requires?
And that's where I was gonna step up and say, I'm not so sure that we move our formal meetings.
Well, I'm just saying, even these go meet the commissioners, if there's three of us there, if it's an announced meeting where people can come and ask us questions, I mean, at, at what point does it cross the threshold? I mean, we're giving them advice at those meetings.
But I, I would not suggest we, we do it outside of this forum.
I mean,
Not that big of a city. As opposed to, of course, there were, people will, they will have access issue.
If we're gonna have it as part of the commission, it should either be, like Chris said, just before the meeting or part of the meeting. I, I don't think it should be separate.
I don't say I don't think that it would be in week to entertain off the idea of, of, of us going to neighborhood meetings, but I think this open house and this conversation when it's more formalized, I would rather have it come here.
Yeah, I would say all of us would go to a neighborhood meeting. We might just have two of us.
Sure.
Be, you know, we could volunteer if we could to say, yeah, we can have to come and take, you know, fifteen minutes on your agenda and talk about what we're doing and what kind of visions do you have, what kind of questions do you have?
Well, my, do you think it'd be advantageous to have the land use training here or take it to each of them?
Out here.
So try and get them to come here, have the attorneys here.
Would be, I think, the two-way communication that we're really looking for between ourselves and them, them and themselves and then us. So it's just constant feed that thing.
Well, the other byproduct of that, I think, is it might actually raise the awareness of people coming to these meetings just to find out what's going on. I mean, that's what I'm having to encourage.
I always thought that the, whenever the city commission thought they're having a slow day, that they should put Walmart issues to be discussed. Always be a full room. Yeah, that way it doesn't work.
Then they might wait the outside. Like you were talking.
Yeah, well, it was, it always, it was always hard to get it. And just like I always thought, the very first meeting in January, the city commission should pass Norman's doubling of salary. Because it would create a human pride and it would basically, you'd end up with the complete ignorance. They would go out and scream at newspapers about public servants, you know, beating at the, at the trough. And, and then everybody would
Yeah, no matter what, it's always the case happen.
And what if, I guess, you know, if I kind of think through this, you know, what if we identified issues that we thought would be good educational opportunities for, you know, land use one-on-one? Break that into one subject and then maybe quarterly or something, we, we do this, you know, we invite folks in the community and then, you know, then how do you build on that? Where do you go from land use one-to-one? Do you go to transportation systems plan? I think you go from the initial feedback that we get. People are gonna come with either questions or concerns and hopefully they'll have some kind of reverberation after. But I guess my fear is that there's an education component that has to go into that because in order to be able to understand and answer the question I'm gonna give them, they have to understand the basis of what's going on.
Look, and that's why I don't know that you're just saying, I think you should go, like, with the first one being, when do I need a permit? Or, you know, do I need a, is the generic question. Because that one gets in, gets you into all the different levels of land use. I'm, I want, I'm a historic district and I wanna change my windows. Okay, that's a this level plan and this, this board is to say, I want to add an addition to my house and I'm, you know, in River Crest. Well, we don't care as long as you get this permit approved, but the River Crest Neighborhood Association might because of violates of CCAs. You know, um, I want to subdivide my five acre farm because I'm now surrounded by people, you know. Well, that's this level thing and you have to go through these steps. So, you know, I wanna paint my house a non-traditional color and I'm in a historic district, but my house was built in nineteen seventy-two. Paint away, you know. So, I mean, those are, those are all, you, you hit all of them with direct examples that they may actually use.
I like that, but I think as Tony said, you have to start with the, the basis. Not that we're gonna give everybody a twenty-five minute lecture on the city council one hundred.
Where do you start?
But that's, that's where you have to start, you know. Why do we have?
Why are we doing this?
Why do we have land use planning in Oregon?
Why is land use planning a quarter?
Right.
Well, and, you know, I, I don't think you have to answer every question in the encyclopedia every time we sit down. We could take, uh, you know, we could have cards that, uh, get passed up at the beginning of their session and we'd have enough questions for the next six months, you know, to respond to.
Cause my only, my only concern with yours is that I get nervous trying to identify specific code requirements to a general question.
Right.
Because someone's gonna go, well, I heard that I didn't and forget about all the other climate context and when it's applicable. They only heard, I don't need a permit for this.
Yeah, that's all they're gonna hear because they already do all this.
Well, and you don't say, I don't need it. Probably not.
But, but it'd be helpful to get specific, you know, even if I got a card from the, from, from Tony the gallery, at least then I can say, okay, it's this tax, you know,
this tax, you know, as opposed to, oh, you never need a permit if you're building a shed under two hundred square feet. You know, as long as you're not, you know, more than three feet from the property line, you're not in a historic district, you're not in a natural resource overlay district, you're not in a steep slope, I mean, it goes on and on and on. Every mix and, mix and match and when those may or may not be applicable is very difficult to do generally.
But yeah, there's some basic things that you can say, if you're affecting the structure of your buildings, you gotta have a permit. If you're adding, uh, flooring fixtures, you gotta have a permit. If you're, uh, doing anything other than replacing the vanity light or is your bathroom, you've, you've gotta, uh, have a permit. So, you know, you can, you can have a, these terms are the threshold, you've gotta have a permit on the basis.
And then the other thing I think that they need to walk away with is maybe not the answer, but where to go to get the answer.
Right, that's the right. Sorry. You'd rather have them answer the question that basically happened in the first place.
But, and that's, I think that goes to the nature of what it's trying to accomplish is get people to ask the question before they're gonna head and get it.
Before they spend the money.
And then they come in and say, well, why do I have to tear it down?
Yeah. But, and that gets back to your, your, uh. We've tried to create quite a few frequently asked question flyers.
And maybe what we're talking about is, uh, the primitive index to that trigger probe of, of, because you can't get into specifics of everybody's individual purpose. But we can have, you know, the general frequently asked question. Is it a categorization of instructions and what resources to look at?
And, and for the, the guy you were ta- talking about, he was pretty emotional about having to take down their, their membrane structure. You know, that's the kind of thing you would like to inform people about ahead of time so that they, they don't can interact with that. You know, saying, why do I have to tear it down?
I remember in Canema, when I was on city council, there was the guy who altered the, the one house and, yeah, and it was like three quarter, I mean, he was like done and somebody came by and saw it. I don't know whether it was a, uh.
That was a neighbor.
Yeah, but it was just like, it's just a different shape and the, the. Yeah, but, yeah, now you've made it an occupied structure, so you need to have an exit. Yeah, I, there was a lot of very, very good reasons for it, but, you know, it's like, well, I did this one little thing and my parents, the, the house basically needs to be torn down. You can't, it's historic, oh my god.
Well, that's, that's the thing that, you know, what I get a little bit geeked about is people who live in Canema generally know that they're in a national British district. They can tell you all they want, but they don't know, but they generally do know. And I, I think.
Although this guy's particular defense, he wasn't really in Canema somewhere, he was in Tumwater. You know, I mean, that, that's, that place doesn't look like it belongs on any registry except.
Well, the guy, he, he put the window in the back, that was, that was like Tony said, that was fire line safety, that was a whole bunch of other things that, you know, it.
Thank god we found out before somebody died, but.
Yeah, I mean, and that's part of what we have to kind of help people understand that a lot of the things that are codified go back to health and safety and those sort of things. And I, and I always like to, I laugh because, you know, you'll see an older house doesn't have a handrail. Well, we get the comment, well, nobody ever fell down. I said, well, people did a lot of things that quote unquote, we don't do today because we're protecting ourselves from ourselves. And so maybe, you know, they were more cross, I don't know, or maybe they fell down and nobody just knew about it. But, you know, the, the, the railings that be so far apart, the others take their head roof. And then when you throw these jackass, we'll get you on the ground. Oh, maybe we do, we have health safety.
No, we just need to let Darwin do his thing, but anyway, um. But the, the thing that I always said when I was in the, in the Navy, when we went through all these safety briefings and people would be like, how's this a foul stuff? Why do we have to do this? I said, because somebody died to, to, to make this rule come into effect. The bureaucracies do not move fast unless somebody has died. So if there's a rule, it's because somebody fled to make it occur. And just like, you know, you know, we don't lock fire doors because people die when the door's locked and they can't get out. But you're great. Well, there's thin folks, the tranquil shirt based factory, you know, no, I don't know if that, well, let's go back to history. You know, you know, and that's, that's part of, I think, what a lot of these people, you know, need to hear is almost every one of these land use rules came about because somebody was injured. Whether it was a property injury because somebody got too close to a steep slope and it fell and, and crushed their house or the neighbor's house fell on their house. Or, you know, a stream undermined their, their foundation because, you know, whatever, if they're in a flood zone and the river rose up to eat them. I mean, all of these rules only occurred because somebody was damaged.
And why do they have hundred year floods every thirty years?
Yeah.
So in warming.
Cause it's gonna have reach.
In the context though of our discussion today and, and point number one, and specifically something like we're talking about open houses, sort of the factions of the why plan, why have the planning, the thank you section and the resource options, um, sections where they go find out what they need to know and when. So what, are we?
Yeah, um, the other thing that.
You know, Tony's got a lot of stuff, and it's a lot of time, and I'm sure that.
I know, that's, that's kind of my concern with.
Scott wins us a lot of presentations. We had a presentation about a piece in USA, I think, on the table. But it seems that, that, that video that is selected here could almost be repackage. It's an eight or ten minute tutorials, basically. And so you would have those in, for posterity rather than just have an open house where you work with people at heart on the issue of the day. You have a library of issues and.
Well, that, that gets back to what I was initially saying about, do we have an open house? And do we just have videos on tap that when we, for instance, don't have a, a commission meeting? Um, you know, they're, they continue to run the month old commission meeting and, and instead they could plug in three, uh, you know, a little, do I need a permit for this? And do, do, you know, uh, what is a land use overlay and what's a historic district and what's a, you know, and, and they can do that for an hour rather than listen to a month old.
And that's a total, if you, you could average.
Which could also be on the website.
Presentations ahead of the planning commission meeting, open, uh, open a work session at the end of the planning commission meeting, have a ten minute presentation by staff that can put into this art on it. And then it could be run on the public access TV network.
I mean, the.
Also have those available at an open house if you did have an open.
Sure.
And begin to what this had a lot of, of concern or, or how do I work with the city? How do I, how do I move forward with my ideas on that topic? The one thing like, you mentioned being, being an ad hoc open house. I, I don't think it's an ad hoc, but I think it's an agenda driven, targeted, uh, open house that could drive into, to something like those resources being eight minute clips online at the end, you know, that they go out further and get information on. I, I didn't envision an open house where it's a free crawl, come, let us know your issues. It's an open house that give our issues this meeting, let's talk about it, let's talk about the frequently asked questions and those drive into the opportunity for resources.
And if you get the feedback though, then you can target your next one.
And then.
Maybe if you got, you know, twenty-five percent of them were themed around some stuff. Water overlays. Right, we could then create the next one to do that and then build on that one.
Right.
But quarterly would give you enough time to, you know, like code, you know, put things together and not be, oh my god, I've got. Still that, but it, but a quarterly is a much less of a scale than monthly or.
For me, you're understanding, you probably don't have a lot of resources with, with preparation of a, say, ten minute presentation on one of these issues.
I guess, I guess the, 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 the question is, how, who are we targeting? And how big, you know, how, you know, are we trying to get the general public coming? Or are we targeting neighborhood association? Cause I think that.
So the question is the audience.
Because, you know, I'm gonna spend resources every quarter with mass, you know, trying to, and notice a lot of folks. You know, to get them here probably needs to be more than ten minutes. You know, it needs to be a, a good dedicated.
And it's effective, you know.
Yes, exactly. But, you know, so, yeah, who's the target? What, who are we expecting to draw? And, and, and I think that kind of, that, that kind of dictates obviously what type of presentation and at what level you're presenting the information. Well, and I think though through certain extent, which you can, what we can do is if we do lay out a, like, a couple of them in advance, cause you, you kind of sort of need to do that to know whether or not it's just, whether it just depends people to talk about this one thing. Um, is, you know, get a little section of the trail news that shows everywhere. And say, planning commission meeting on this day, we'll be talking, you know, it'll be an open house, which will.
On the issue.
Yeah, and, and, and then you don't have to jump through a lot of hoops and then we can hit the CIC to spread the word there also. Um, you know, because I, I think the audience specifically is the whole general public. But if we can, you know, it, it's not gonna, we're not gonna get eighteen hundred or thirty thousand people in here. I mean, if we get thirty, we're gonna be doing really good. Um, but my experience from both the commission and out in the neighborhoods, the CIC is while only thirty people might be in this room, there's three or four hundred that watch the videos.
And that's a similar question.
Yeah, and, and, um, so, you know, from that aspect, you know, I, I think that's, that's what we want to do, but, but I don't see this as, um, you know, a major production. We set an hour aside, if your, if your presentation is twenty minutes for this topic or thirty minutes, because that's what you need to feel good about the information you put up and the rest is Q and A, great. And if it's ten minutes and we have, you know, and if we get ten minutes right before we go to our meeting, great. I mean, however that works out. Um, but one of the other things that I thought would be useful is CIC goes out to, um, the farmer's market once a month and they have a little booth and they do a meet your CIC, here's who we are, this is the neighborhood you're in. Uh, here's a card with their number, here's when their meetings are, kind of the thing. I, you know, as much as people kind of gave commissioner typical grief for his meet the commissioner thing, I think that might be really beneficial to, for us to, you know, once a month, go to, you know, the farmer's market, cause it's now annual, uh, since we just permitted it close to the street. Um, and we just, you know, we do a meet the commissioner, there's a city commissioner, an urban renewal commissioner, a planning commissioner, maybe even a county commissioner there. And just, you know, let them know, here's who we are, this is when we meet. Um, this is the sort of stuff that we deal with. This is, you talk to him about this, you talk to me about that and, and, um, you know, and, you know, we're not elected, we're appointed, but we're citizens, we live here, you know, the decisions affect us as much as they do you. Um, you know, I mean, if nothing else, there, there's that, you know, hand glass back and we're not just people on the camera, you know, on the, on the computer screen or channel twenty-eight that you can't hear us. So.
So we're talking about these two things, one thing being more interactive, open house workshop type of the venue and the other be a set of formal presentations that could be repurposed, say, from a planning mission work session. And these two things that, that I'm thinking about, uh, how do we put these together? Are they separate? Are we talking about doing?
I, I think the second one becomes, comes from the, the first ones.
Yeah.
You know, a- after we do the first presentation, um, you know, then it gets, it, it goes on the city website and, um, maybe there's a brief, uh, like click here for answers to the facts of the meeting. You know, cause there'll be the, the questions that we couldn't answer at the time or wherever. Um, but I, I think the second part grows steadily as we do the first part. And it might take four or five years before there's a, you know, a big library and things, of course, codes will change and some of the, but, but I don't think it's, you know, unless we get one that falls on the stick and give Tony about fifty thousand hours of overtime, I don't think we can do two very quickly. Let's just say, let's say we do an open land use, whatever we're gonna call those. You know, we, we come up with a name for these open house, you know, some that we can, we can create a webpage and then it was set aside an hour. And, you know, my presentation, the attorney's presentation takes twenty-five minutes. You know, there may be some interrupting with questions during that twenty-five minutes. Maybe then we just splice that twenty-five minutes. You know, we have this new webpage, whatever we're calling this open house process that becomes the webpage and, uh, you know, and here's the, here's the topic we talked about. And you can just splice in this twenty-five minute section. Or, or for that matter, not even necessarily have a separate page, but put it in as a video clip to the fact that you've already got on your back page. You know, if it's about one of those FAQs, you know, and here's the planning commission, open house on, on the issue, click here.
How, how easily is, is it carved those up and identified and, you know, with that, that, that.
Yeah.
Well, if your presentation was focused on one particular issue and it could run anywhere from ten to twenty minutes long, you know, I'll complicate the issue most certainly.
Yeah, they don't want to keep up this and, and I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not expecting Tony or Laura or Christine to do all this. I, I'm saying right now, I'm willing to step up and do something. And I, you know, I would hope we all of, we've got.
All of their, Tony's doing something.
Yeah, they need to, they need to, I get volunteered all already, so. But I think that there are parts of things that we can talk about from our own experience that would be irrelevant in our topic, uh, like we talked about up here, about a permit. There's some basic stuff that some of us maybe have already applied for permit. Uh, you know, you're an architect, you need to talk, what is designing? In, just from your own experience.
You know, the, the one thing that I would say is I think if it's gonna be a formal presentation, it's gotta be cultured through.
Of course.
Tony's office because, uh, whatever is said, it's gonna go out there as this is a policy position that it, it has to be backed up that there's, there's, um, code behind that. It's not just, that's going on our opinions that way.
Well, and one thing I would say on any of the presentations is try to stay away from code citations. That's the quickest way to make the honest call. Um, I, I understand you, uh, and our finding code is found here and it's seventeen forty or whatever. That's fine, but, you know, we've had some presentations both here in the city council where it's, and as you can see, seventeen forty, you know, dot six slash B three. What, what, you know, and, and that's of course overridden by, you know, seventeen forty-two slash nine, and, and it's like, whoa. Here's our general code, you know, this is where it is. This subsection, you know, like the big broad heading, um, and that's for any of us that are doing, because especially the problem is when you get too deep into that is then you have to, you, you start getting too specific and then you're losing the broadness of the presentation. So I guess, I, I, I put it back a little bit there, it's that the neighborhood associations need that because the comments that they submit are honestly very useless unless they actually take the time to understand and have some basic knowledge about. Yeah, you, you have to figure out what code they're referencing when they say, there's too many cars on the street. Uh, or it's, you know, they, or they submit comments with an expectation that too many cars on the street is something that we can respond to through the land use processing we can't, and it can also get a feeling to become disenfranchised because there is no action.
It's higher song.
How many, um, how many trail news letters go out there?
Well, three, they trot the three at the end of the day because they'll run this budget.
Um, what we do is we pick three topics and get ourselves in the schedule to prioritize, you know, the next three trail news letters and how.
Yeah, then they're, they're not quarterly, they're trying or whatever, but that's fine too, that's not, one of the, it's funny.
About thirty eleven goals and, you know, at the end of the day, we need to, uh, promise to be clear direction.
So basically one presentation in four months, right?
Would that be a, a reasonable thing to do? And would it be useful for, for the city, I mean, from, from the people of Atlanta to have official information available, uh, that we have? I think, I think that, that the packages would be entirely useful for neighborhood associations. I'm sure that I absolutely, um, appropriate for something like general public, but I think, I think it would be a cool approach. And in addition to the three presentations that we, we'd be talking about, perhaps later in the year would be, we, we maybe do something in a more open forum and, and again, see how the year develops because I still want to kind of go back to trying to put up there, uh, I think there's three doors for, and, and work with there. We don't know exactly what's gonna happen there.
Correct, yeah.
So.
I think I've got some direction, not to maybe try and fill up with some type of, uh, outline uh, topic issues that we can create and use some time and we can put that together and bring that back for discussion.
To me, wants to, uh, say prioritize three, uh.
I think Tony can prioritize, I mean, he, you know what's coming to your desk or, you know, your, your counter.
I think you're getting at it, I think it's with the language for our goals, so you're saying. Well, I, I, it sounds to me like there's a consensus that this commission has, wants to have a goal of engaging the public, encouraging public outreach and public involvement and communication initiation. And what we're probably been talking about, about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it sounds to me like, uh, it can add value to Tony's operation. And, um, and we talked about some higher level focus throughout that. I mean, I want to know that there are specific issues like the street trees and anyways, for example, if you look them up, but it, I think as you think about it, you might want to kind of start with the, the cases of permit and maybe work down to any issues, um, such on that basis, like, adding something that will be good to talk about this out.
I mean, for this, I mean, we could have those, uh, like one A, which is, uh, the planning commission will hold at least three open houses to discuss uh, currently topical issues.
There you go.
And then, and then, and then, and then that way, you know, we know that we're going to have three open houses, this is, you know, the, the topics are determined, but they'll be topical as opposed to typical.
I guess if I could just, if we can maybe leave this a little bit cleaner, and then like I said, this is kind of like, you know, we've been called one A, we're going to sort of put it out here, and to me, that this becomes the, the working document goal of, of one is, you know, open house, public outreach training, really what it calls us. And then, so that this, I, you know, I'd like to try and keep this a little bit cleaner so we don't end up like we did last time. Nineteen, twenty-two.
So basically, we can leave it as is and, and.
That's kind of how I was envisioning, is that we, that we see, that we come back to them.
My, my, my problem with that is, in thirty years of public service is I've gotten pages and pages of these broad goals with no proof that anything was ever done, other than that pages and pages of broad goals were generated. And so if they had even just one bullet of, or, you know, or that it was written, such as the way that there was an outcome, because, you know, that, goals aren't any good if there's no outcome.
You want, you want not only goals, you want an objective, and you want some sort of deliverable at the end that says.
Yeah, otherwise it's just another wasted treat.
You want to promote citizen involvement, I think the.
But then it's a priority.
Right, the, the, the goal is, for us, I mean, it says, we plan to have at least, you know, three or four open houses, uh, we have to try to meet with, you know, the urban renewal commission and, and find out, you know, how our goals set up Carol. I asked from the commission, I said, well, what are the goals for the next year, and what, what are you planning on trying to accomplish? Are you going to be doing this? So I kind of got the, uh, the ear and headlights thing, so. I think that's the other thing, is that how, you know, we've got them under three.
I, I definitely don't want a ten-page document, but one or two bullets after each one that becomes a, you know, we met with Urban Renewal Commission, we didn't end up succeeding in dovetailing, but at least we met with them as opposed to we'd liked at some point in the long run, you know, it's December twenty-eighth, I guess.
That's not a goal document.
A goal, that's enough.
Yeah.
Would, would it be easier if I created a document that goes with it, that we fill in as we accomplish those? No, we want it as you, on the first sheet.
Well, I don't want the, as we fill in, as we accomplish things, document. I, I don't have a problem with there being a separate document with.
Some, some objectives.
What I, what I suggest is that we go through the, this, and, uh, only to recompile it, and for, for each of these high-level
Yeah.
keeping both, one or two things that summarize our discussion about the outcome that we see relatively difficult.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, uh, if you, there's each one of those points where the question is, what does the planning, planning commission hold as part of the process, that Tony could just substitute for that question, here's what we're trying to actually do.
And we want to say.
So you've got one or two bullets under each one of those, it's just this, uh.
The role of the planning commission.
This is our tack, we're going to create open houses with a, a public, uh, presentation, three or four months, yeah. And that's, that's all the rest, so, and then the, the detail of that can be, you know, separate.
Yeah.
But we've got one or two, four, three.
Yeah, I'm not asking for any, just, just, we're going to have three open houses. The end, you know, I, it does, you know, and if we end up doing three of them in December in order to meet it, or if we only end up having two because of the way, you know, the, the trail news rolls out, fine, but at least we can, you know, there's a.
I just want to make sure that one of those, one of those three or four things that means sort of like a, a, a land use number one, I, I think that's.
Well, that, that, that's, that's, it already can, so. That might be the best first one, because it's one that's already canned and it can kind of start.
What about number two?
You know, with this one, I think we are, you know, we have to wait until season's finished.
Yeah, and, and this one, I'm actually okay with it, it is, because it's an ongoing process. And we would be working with them on a regular basis as opposed to meet with them in December and see if we did it right.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that at some point early in the next fiscal year, the city commission, urban renewal commission, and art commission will have our goals established, and most discussion is that at that point, there's a work session with the three commissions, and that's the bullet point, that would be under the number two.
Well, but I guess the, the hard part here is that the city commission's goals are already adopted.
And they, they kind of own that vision.
Well, they, they, you know, they've.
There's been a push now to add visioning after the goals were adopted, budgets adopted. So we kind of need to wait and see where they're going to go, because right now, we're, we've, I've got an approved budget to do South End concept plan. Okay, so now, there's discussion of, do we do a city visioning, do we do a visioning for Blue Perrin, do we do a visioning for the urban renewal area?
Do we do it for all the concept planning areas?
Well, exactly, so until I have some direction from them, it's very difficult, because urban renewal might not end up doing a plan. I, I don't know, we, I, so, you know, we were, it seemed like we were on board to do South End concept plan. We, you know, we had the scope about finished, and so we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, until I get direction, I'm not going to spend any more money in this. Um, till we know where we're going. Um, we looked into Beaver Creek visioning process, uh, it won an award for how well it was done, but it was, it was, it was over a two-year process, um, well north of two hundred grand. Um, and what was unique about it, what made it so, such a successful program, was it wasn't run by any of the departments. It was run out of a public information officer, out of the mayor's office, department heads weren't involved, it was through grassroots, and um, they pretty much got a one and a half FTE dedicated to the project. Uh, the project manager attended over ninety to a hundred and twenty citizen mission meetings. You know, they had a core group of, I think it was seven or eight citizens who made up the visioning team. It was very hands, city hands-off, there was no creative, from goal or direction, um, so that's a larger discussion that we need to have, because if you think the system will be planning right, I mean, if you want that type of citizen involvement, citizen outreach, now that, that, that takes a resource that we don't currently have, and it's not a mystical partnership, but, you know, someone has to be the face of the city, and it's, and it's, it's a commitment. So, you know, one of our concerns is that, you know, we have an adopted comprehensive plan, you've got Beaver Creek, and you've got South End, you've got the working, you have the ability to do uh, special area plans. You know, let's get those, just, let's just get the last ones done out of that comp plan. And if we want to roll into a community vision, to roll into an updated comp plan, that, you know, that may make more sense. Otherwise, there's no reason to do a South End concept plan if we're going to do a community vision.
I really agree, I, I can't, I can't see that when, you know, you know, if we had, I, I, I always want to say, you know, chickens were, if, what, beggars were had horses everybody to ride, you know, if, if twenty years ago, we had done a community vision for our community, we would be in a similar steep top spot that I saw it in, in the eighties. They started thinking about what they wanted their community to be, and they, they had find-in from the community, and they went about in a very systematic way of getting that done, and I, you know, I, I, I just have to be honest and say, you know, Oregon students been this way, and that way, and this way, and that way. And, you know, I, I, I'm pretty sure that I personally have another twenty years to live, but I don't want, I don't want us to go on the way that we have been going on. It, it, you know, it doesn't make sense to me to do a visioning plan for South End where the rest of this is so lacking. I mean, we at one time here had neighborhood plans that are so outdated. You know, we've never gotten back to that either, I mean, I, I know, I know that it costs money, but I think it's, it's like the cartoon that I was describing, you know? We need to buckle down, we need to spend the money, we need to do it.
The kind of practical standpoint, you know, here, understanding is, this is something that we have a central role in, and city council has the lead role, so until they initiate something accountable, kind of, or.
Yeah, I mean, and it.
As individuals, I don't think we need to sit back and wait, maybe as a commission we do, but as individuals, as a community, I think we have an obligation to tell those folks that something needs to happen.
What is the boundary of the South End concept plan, or?
Well, that's to be determined, um, it's, it's obviously the.
So it's the end.
It's, it's what we, it's what we brought into the UGB in two thousand and two. Um, but like with Park Place, we, we, we added some lands that were already in UG to be part of the concept plan, it just makes sense to do that area, we're a little busy. So, you know, the exact boundary of it, uh, is flexible, uh, you know, we're probably going to grab, everything is still in the county, but you know, it's been in UGBs since the seventies, we'll probably grab a lot of that.
And, and the city is close to out of compliance with Metro or out of compliance with Metro in terms of the timing?
Yeah, I, I just received approval for a three-year extension, um, to finish South End and Beaver Creek.
And it's, and one year, it keeps on process to be that plan?
You know, and it was still doing in Beaver Creek, I mean.
Right, but, but, but with Beaver Creek, uh, with Beaver Creek, it was done two years ago, and then it's doing it in.
So it's off.
Right, but, but we didn't do the zoning yet. Right, but, but we did what we needed to do for Metro's purposes.
Still need to read the zoning.
But we had a plan in place and it went to court. So as far as meeting Metro's timeline, we can argue that we, we've met it and we're, and it's still an operational plan. South End ain't even in your typewriter yet, other than South End concept plan. And so, you know, Metro can argue that we're not doing it, and, and we have a lot of extra money from them for, for doing some of these, and if we wait too long, they're going to pull funding because they got somebody else who's ready to go, so, yeah. Um, the other thing I had, you were saying, you know, we should have like this joint meeting with the city and, and urban renewal and, and us, and after the visioning thing is figured out. I'm okay with that, but we can't compel either one of them to appear at a meeting with us. City council can compel both of us to appear, but we can't compel. Yeah, so to make that one of our goals is to have a joint meeting with them, when we don't have the authority to make that meeting happen. Yeah.
But I guess the key part of duty is to make the recommendation, that's, that's our duty.
Right.
And that's my suggestion, is there to make that recommendation. I'm not saying you can't, I'm not happy with that.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying the way you. Well, I, you said, you said that we would have a meeting with them after, you know, the, the beginning of the, the fiscal year. And that's great, I agree, but, you know, it would be, we would request that we have a joint meeting with them, as opposed to, we will have a meeting. If it's on paper, it's literal, so.
I think we understand.
Okay.
But I really need to focus back on what we're looking at, it's basically, simply stated, is working with this commission, urban renewal, that's what it says is where we're going. Be at the end of this conversation.
I think once they tick a direction, then we can have the conversation of how we can assist. Yeah, but they'll be ticked which one or two they want to do, and, and I don't disagree, I think a community vision would be great. I just, my worry is that we, we have planning requirements that we need to make on time. Not doing South End concept plan puts a sixty-five thousand dollar hole in my budget, without relying on construction access to pay my people to run that, that plan. There are bigger financial and staffing issues associated with some of these decisions that were changing after we've already adopted the budget. Now, you know, if we, if we want to go do a community vision, that's fine, and it's wonderful, and I, you know, I hope we would do it like, like Beaver Creek did, like I said, they won awards for that, 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 what their product was. Uh, but it's, it's the first step in a multi-year planning commitment to update their comp plan, and to just say, that's it, we're putting everything on hold. You know, if, if that's the way we want to go, that's fine, we just, you know, we need to have that discussion, though.
I wish we could just stop times, or.
Do we agree that basically the language we got in number two is about where we can go with this?
Yeah.
Just to move.
Yeah.
This will not get something where we get cyclical.
People did.
I'm not, I'm not certain that, that it concludes the recommendation that Tony would forward to South End concept plan. I think, uh, that would be the consensus of this group, this, you know, it is where that belongs.
We can make a recommendation.
Yeah.
I just, yeah, I don't think it belongs in, in, this specific, this South End belonging to the bigger community vision goal scheme.
Yeah, I think that's just something we need to do. At our next, at our next meeting, I just want to make some motion that.
Community vision is, is South, South End, Beaver Creek, McLaughlin River Crest is all part of that big puzzle that comes together to make the entire picture. That's how I see it, it's not, it's not driving the boat.
So, number three.
So what did we ask you, years Carter, how often did the planning commission meet with these other groups? I know that was some sort of a goal, but did it actually ever happen?
Yeah, we, uh, the city commission, number five.
And we even, we're setting sort of review boards, I think.
There is at least an annual, I don't know, some decision to make, sure.
They were on again, off again.
Right.
And, and we already have one work section, like we did another.
At, at a time, the urban renewal commission was the city commission.
And for that, yes, then, yeah, we'd have to make sure that they were hacked when they found that it says urban renewal commission and they kind of take off.
So, so with this one, is it more of a, you know, crack goes to city commission, it goes on the up way? Is it a update from the other subcommittees, or is it, are we trying to identify linkages? Because whilst, there is no structure, you know, it, it's not like it, it goes from transportation advisory committee to TC to city commission. You know, it tends to be this confused structure or system, right?
It's probably best like that in back, if there's some, especially for me, it is about having some level of information from those groups. I think at this level, this planning level, what, what is your focus, what are the things that you're working on at, at this point, this year, for example? That's what it is for me.
So they can like, a, a once-a-year meeting with each of the committees?
Yeah.
I think with the committees, yes, for the other commissions and boards that have police-like judicial authority, that's different. See, I think you've got the sorcery board, you've got the planning commission, you've got the city council at this level. We have things about crack and the, and resources, they don't have any, let's say, or judicial decision-making, and, and what, for me, from a neighborhood standpoint, if it doesn't need to disconnect, it leads before what I've seen from crack and, and the transportation group, they have no clue about whatever, what else is going on, and they don't understand what they're, in my opinion, just the marketing, you know, what their role is in the hierarchy, so they're, they're doing things, and then it gets back to the neighborhood association, and we go, well, wait a minute. Don't they realize that city council or planning committee or sorcery board, this affects them, and it's kind of, they're operating kind of out there in a little bit of a backfield? And it really, so. And it really, so those things really should be percolating up.
Well, I think in fact is that in our code, there is not a hierarchy between those seven boards and these commissions. If there were a hierarchy, I'm sure we would be able to read it in our code. I think what we're talking about is a forum to share information, a forum about what's going on on your board.
Can we get there by providing timely, legitimate reports?
Well, I think, I think we've, there's what, eight, nine committees that are active? I mean, there's like twelve, but it's like eight or nine that are active. So if we just did a, you know, one, you know, the first meeting of the month, fifteen minutes, you know, fifteen budget meetings. Yeah, and just, just kind of try to schedule, cause I'd like to know what Transportation Advisory Committee's seeing in front of them. Because if we're hearing, you know, land use things and they're hearing, you know, traffic issue, traffic needs, you know, and it's in South End and, you know, we need to know what developers coming with the traffic report that says, you know, public service will not be affected by the five hundred and sixty-three houses I'm about to put out there. And yet, T A C without houses out there is getting constant reports of speeding and, you know, running red lights and- and all that. Then maybe we wanna pay a little closer attention to the traffic report than we normally would have been.
Yeah, that's what you get. You gotta be careful there, that you're not confusing land use approval criteria with instructions.
Well, I understand, but I'm, it- it, you know, you know, if we're already having problems with the location and. We're just.
Speeding's not a land use problem.
I understand, but. Well, but, but speeding can be ameliorated by how a plat is laid out. If there's not straight line streets or lanes wide, like, you know, drag strips, but there's turn. You know, but I know it gets back to the whole grid versus, but, you know, tho- those are things that we as the planning commission can kind of address. We look at a plat and it's got, you know, drag strip written on it and they're already having speeding problems out there. And maybe we, can you, you know?
I realistically, we're looking at that plat identifying as the main arterial, blah, 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 right? And that, and that's the need.
Well, okay, here's a, we made a specific, we're, here's a specific example. And sorry for all you, for my French, but this BS about Myers Road being a through lane, it's not. Glendale is the through lane and they're never gonna build that bridge across there to connect Myers Road. It's not gonna happen probably in my entire lifetime. So why are we talking about Myers Road being a through connection by the, by the college? And not just identifying Glendale for what it is, an arterial, and addressing the- the traffic concerns where they are? I mean.
Well, it's my other opinion, and I think that.
I'm talking about the reality of the situation.
Reality is that the city's got plans together.
Uh-huh. And- and the, and then the city violated those plans when they let the, when they let, uh, the developer not push Myers Road through because it was gonna be too expensive. So.
Myers- Myers Road is built for everyone who's developed from Beaver Creek Road to where it terminates at Valley School. There hasn't been any development between there and- and through thirteen. The college is dedicated for right away across their property, so we're two topics away from having Myers- Myers Road here. So, you know, I guess I- I disagree a little bit. That, you know, every time we got a chance to get Myers Road built, it's been built. Um, you know, you're missing Stasiomus P's and then you're missing, um.
The one that we're gonna, we wanna put the, uh, the Public Works Facility on.
But, you know, if- if you kind of answer the question of number three, the- the way I see it is that we've got nine, twelve different commissions or committees that are out there doing their thing independently and- and I guess, I- I saw the objective of this is to create some communication dialogues so that we're not working in the back. We have an opportunity to have a little bit of cross-communication, so we know what's kind of going on.
And that those committees knows somebody's listening.
And it seems to me that either if- if we dedicated for thirteen minutes once a month or having a representative from each one of those committees give us a report.
Or even just a red, a report that's red.
Or- or- or maybe a memo.
Sure.
A memo that they could create at their own meeting that would be read to us.
That's right, I didn't try and say it.
I'm not.
Well, someone will do that stat, someone will don't.
Right, I'm not sure the objective of number three is to talk to the city. It's only that number three was.
And- and that's what I meant by like the speaking and the, and the concerns is, you know, we didn't even know that.
I think also, I'm, I'm, I'm in, agreeing with what you're saying. I'm interested in having, I'm interested in number one, so you understand what I'm saying, this is. I'm interested in being proactive about communicating with them. I'm not interested in having a fifteen-minute time on the administrative report. That doesn't allow for me to have a conversation with them about what it is that they're doing.
You know, what we're doing is our place. I don't think that's our place.
But if we have communication, to me, communication is too late. I'm not interested in seeing that they're going, okay, crack did, blah, 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 blah. I'm interested in having a city open and we can say, well, this is what we're doing, what you're doing, how do we take those things cross, you know?
The workstation, okay. Well, well, if we had a, a workstation with everybody at one of the city council meetings, uh, where we actually had an opportunity to dialogue.
How much dialogue would you get with nine different committees with four or five people apiece?
It would be chaos.
So you're, if you are opposed to just a recording, or are you saying you want that and this?
Well, what I see is, yeah, I mean, what I would see is they would come in and give a report and then there would be another fifteen minutes, twenty minutes of dialogue after that. You know, what's going on, you know, how? Whatever it be, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be, uh, uh, your time's up, get out of here, you know, you took more than your fifteen minutes, so I'm gonna hit the buzzer and you need to.
And some of those conversations could lead to identified work sessions where we say, hey, thanks for that, have a little bit of dialogue, back and forth, let's plan on working this further through.
Yeah, it sounds like what, this sounds a lot like what Tac said, you know, two months ago, why don't the three of us get together and have a meeting? You know, something like that.
I'm interested in having a conversation with the committee people. I am more interested in wrapping that up on another level with what has been done in the past with the Urban Renewal Commission, with the City Council and with the Sorker Review Board, where it's, you know, we have a lot of commonality. And that where it's, that everybody's on the same plan. I think there's different levels of communication depending on what the authority of group has.
Yeah, cause it's not gonna be as great for our time to be spending thirty minutes with parks and rec. But, you know, or if anything, we do, it might be worth it.
But I think it's worthy to give them opportunity to report, get into that dialogue and then within each of those conversations identify how much further we wanna go and at what time to do.
Or maybe they're.
How does he support it?
Maybe they're reporting five minutes report and we talk.
With some Q and A's and then like, and then say, hey, this needs to be tabled to a further, you know, larger discussion.
They give us a five-minute report, this is what we're doing, and then we have fifteen minutes to talk.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think it's each one, but.
Well, as a group, you know, we can gauge, some groups I think are, uh, you know, just by more time than others.
But again, I still see that there's, we need to break down on the sidewalk, cause I think some of those committees operate a little bit on the sidewalk. And they're not silos. There's connection between all of that. I mean, I'll give you an example, I- I would have really appreciated crack coming in, even to, and I'm gonna be very specific about McLaughlin. Did any of us know in our neighborhood that there was this big plan to replace all those tree metal trees there?
At Carnegie.
At Carnegie Park. We heard about it because one of the crews was taken down. And so we said, yeah, well, what's the plan? Well, crack has been talking to us. Well, did anybody from crack, um, and say, hey, well, this is called, I think those McLaughlin people are gonna be really kind of curious, blah, blah, blah. Maybe they should have some communication with them. That type of thing has not been happening or wherever the park issues are going on or, you know.
But with them, but would crack coming to us do McLaughlin any good? I mean, we're on the McLaughlin, they were, but, you know, would they, them coming to us, giving us a report and us having a dialogue, do Rivercrest any good if they're gonna redo, you know? Yeah, or.
Maybe you can talk to Rivercrest, they're gonna be a little more.
And maybe that's part of the community vision to schedule at the higher, at the council level that they implement a structure of that, but I don't have, I don't.
No, I'm just saying, there are, there are other things that are kind of out there that, you know, if you're not on crack, you don't know that. You know, why do we know that? I mean, I- I would think that those zone creeks have a lot of needs, it's more than just people who are in McLaughlin either.
You have spare time, you can watch, uh, you can watch it go, that's a practice.
Oh, really?
Cause you don't, you don't know that there's any issue of importance to you, how you, why would you leave the block?
True.
Being a person that's in the block, that stuff is really different. When I really need to know about it, I call them up, this, I wouldn't have any hour in there.
Well, I think, you know, kind of hearing kind of a, two things, one is the communication thing, but I mean, maybe some concerns about this structural makeup or setup of these committees. I just wanna be careful that.
I don't wanna get into that.
Okay, but we just gotta be careful that, I think we- we have no authority over them other than meeting with them.
Yeah, and- and I've related, we have the, because from a committee member's standpoint, sometimes you say things and you don't know where they want you. You pass them to a staff member, you talk to a commissioner, whatever, but when you come to the commission and you actually say, this is what we said. If nothing else, it's like, somebody wants to know that we're alive. I mean, if nothing else, you get that message out to them, that the planning commission is glad to know that you're alive and doing them, even if you're reporting only five minutes instead of an hour. I don't care, you know? And- and that does a lot for, you know, volunteer regeneration if nothing else.
What if we invited, uh, a different committee or commission to just once a month?
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We're looking at the first meeting of the month, we have a, you know, like October be crack and November be Tac.
For you asking for one person from crack to go in your presentation?
They can all come if they want.
I would disagree and I would say that you're, you're trying to, if a work session's set, you're gonna put it into a meeting. So you want a work session with the group or do you want a report from whoever they're?
Back at the very beginning, which is a report with some Q and A discussion afterward.
And then work sessions at meetings.
Yeah, if something, wow, that's really interesting, we don't have time in this meeting, let's see if we can schedule, uh, time to talk, to talk.
Is that where everybody's kind of at and is that where you're at on this, Denise?
I'm not there.
What do you, what do you think?
Well, I know that if you go to the city county's website, their city manager does a monthly report. And he reports the status of transportation, parking, traffic, community development, et cetera. And I'm not aware that our city manager produces second report. So the report I've got, if you, it's a simple thing to go through. And I would bring you up to date on what's going on. I think for, uh, the purpose of informing any recommendations that we would want to make to the city and other public authorities about the mobility issues, uh, related to natural resource areas or parks recreation or traffic or whatever. I think the best forum that is, uh, set up like this, we sort of have a table and we begin with, with a, uh, with a report or just a general discussion of these are the things that we've been talking about over the last several months. And then we have the discussion.
But how do you identify what issues or what discussions merit that mean?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
And that's where I say, let's get some reports and have that conversation and we.
So let's say, what he's saying is you're somebody, the crack group is here, whoever they are. You're one of the crack members and you're saying, well, over the last three months, we've had a discussion about how to move forward or redoing of Rivercrest Park. We've talked about Carnegie Park, we've talked about Chapin Park, blah, 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 blah. You heard it fine and say, oh, that's great, well, here's what we've been doing, blah, 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 blah. And then people start having the conversation. That's, that's what I see, why? I don't really wanna sit up there.
Well, I don't see myself as having three or four or five meetings a month to, no, one more on top of our two regular meetings.
And that's a something else.
I didn't hear anybody say that would be in addition to our regular meetings.
But that's where we're at.
Between our, between our open houses and our two, twice a month regular meetings and these work sessions that you're proposing, we're looking at a minimum of three meetings a month because we don't wanna have more than one possibly to committees at the, at that because it just gets too unmanageable, not to mention all the reporting and all that other stuff. And so, how many thousands of hours of staff time are we willing to commit to us just going and attending one of their meetings? So just sitting down saying, you know, I'm from planning commission and I'm really interested in what you guys have been doing, but do you just? I mean, if that's what you want, great, we'll go to the different committee meetings and we'll just sit in their meeting and let them talk to us and talk to them. No, you volunteered to do it. Now you're, that's a volunteer.
Be something that has been won.
Yeah, I mean, I- I- I think, you know, of the more formal initial report with feedback, at least gets, gets us in the door with.
Guess if they have something to say.
Yeah.
I- I don't see any justification for creating a whole series of work sessions when we don't even know that there's.
A reason to.
So if somebody could come in from the committee and give us a five-minute report, we may say, sounds great, for them. But if they're talking about redeveloping, you know, a whole district and we're kind of going, whoa, we didn't know we were doing that. How about we schedule a work session a year, a month? I would almost like it if they were the ones that wanted the work session, we're about, yeah, that's a great idea. Cause, I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't object that.
They would come to the meeting with something to say.
They've probably never been asked to come.
Yeah.
We go back to.
Yeah, that's right. Let's get that communication method started.
We're all in agreement that we want to talk to these people. We haven't figured out what the format is yet, but at least we decided we wanted to hear some kind of formal, informal presentation. Doesn't have to be a PowerPoint that they could just come and say, here's what we've been doing. Are we all in agreement of that?
Well, I'm, I'm with Chris, it doesn't even necessarily have to be a presentation, as we just write as a memo. That says, this is what we're looking at.
Well, maybe that's the direction that we need to start, is to ask staff to write a note or two to the chair of crack, the chair of natural resources. And say that we're interested in what's going on with their groups and.
Especially natural resources, they're just forming up, so we need to know what their brain is at.
Ask them how we can better communicate.
And what can we do to help you with your goals? And these are our goals.
And I would like to say that, um, you could sign a letter on our behalf.
Say happy hello letter.
Happy hello letter.
Yeah, and we maintain that there's two or three committees that, uh, we have global interest that we want to schedule a work session. Specifically around an issue, not just in general, let's get together and talk.
It'd be nice if there was a issue.
I would have talked before any of the concepts.
Well, issue agenda, you know.
Cause that's, that's why.
Without an agenda, then we're just sitting down to talk. I don't think we all have time to do that.
So, were we giving you enough interaction on three?
So we're gonna, Carter's gonna write, we're gonna write letters to the, uh, commissions and boards that are identified as number three.
And we're gonna offer the opportunity to actually give a report, is that what you're saying? I think that's always a base level. Where we go from there, we're not sure.
Maybe you can write something up for Tony to holler.
Would I be willing to do that?
Yeah.
On topic, but Tony can't do it.
Well, I think you should do it and then Tony needs to put some finishing sentences on it. It would be a lot easier.
Yeah, you just do a dear committee chair and it's, you know, we need to.
Make it personal, not a dear committee chair, you know, here. You know, here, Joe Schmoller, whoever it is.
The rest can be formed.
But he could just write a couple paragraphs, you can give him and he can all sign it. That would be one of us, and he would. Oh, that's true, that's on the. But you could just send me and say, here's what people should say and there you go.
Should we talk about the, uh, President USA designation requirement?
Where are we with that? Do we have, uh, a new committee?
No, that's gonna be, that's gonna be another topic we're probably gonna have to discuss at some point. I think we've had a natural resource committee open about a month now.
End of the month is my application so far. It's gonna be the end of the month is my application so far.
Uh, so, when I, um, when I received Charles' request, kind of looking at some of the costs of the program and the benefits of it. So we had, we.
Do you want to start?
Yes. Uh, so then we had prepared our original application, we were ready, we, uh, we had documented how much money was spent through planning, or worse, and plantings, and grooming, and companies were removed, et cetera. Showing that we complied with the annual expenditure of two dollars, um, per capita. Um, we have three ordinance both in public, uh, Street Three section under chapter twelve, which is a double of worst section as well, but anyways, code, to meet that requirement. The Arbor Day Observation Proclamation, we would need if we became, uh, and then we, we prepared the resolution identifying the, the committee members. Um, that, that ended up being this, this looking point, and that's what stopped it.
Why did I say I'm taking that?
Uh, the city commission did not want it to be, uh, the planning commission.
They didn't want it to be part of the planning commission?
Correct. They wanted it to be the natural resource committee, which shit, that's what it was to stand. So, we were trying to roll this out with reestablishing the natural resource committee, and we can't get enough folks to do that, we probably recommend it go back.
Well, I'm hesitant to call it commission.
You know, I don't, I don't remember.
Was this the whole city commission or this?
That was my next question.
Okay, you're right, and my brain was.
I'd have to go back and find it.
Well, maybe, maybe it could be some planning commission, some.
Well, yeah, well, it's a number, it's a number of planning commission, one number of Pratt, and one number zero of public, so number four is here, so.
You think about maybe a five members group?
Well, I think that's gonna be nine.
Well, I know, but I mean, if you could, it could be maybe two members of the planning commission, maybe one crack, and that would be, you know, public, that could be a very small type little group.
Well, the, the, the problem is that without, you know, how, how busy is the street committee going to be? Yes, having enrolled in the natural resource committee, it's standing meetings, they have other objectives. You know, our concern with natural resource committee going away was to create another committee, for probably a pretty thin workload at the moment, so that it made sensible in the planning commission with other, other professionals to supplement and assist. Um, so, I guess the role of the planning commission in this could either be quite significant, or it may end up moving to another committee, um, at which point, I think, you kept this on here as a goal, because it's, it's something we're trying to implement for multiple years now.
But you said the other jurisdictions that have, we said, you look for a neighbor, or his, or his.
Oh, how do they have this? That's a good question. I'll, I'll have to talk with Keith, he's doing a lot of the research.
Yeah, let's hope he goes, I don't have one.
Right, I know he, I know he'd looked at research quite a few to come up with a model that we would use, uh, but I don't have that answer.
Yeah, that's a good question to ask.
I guess my question is, this whole goal, this is my fault, my job is to be the, probably my fault. I know it's at the beginning. I mean, obtaining a free city USA designation, it's not, I mean, this is, this is a city commission goal, it's, you know, it's not, I mean, I, you know, I could see, you know, support the city commission in their obtaining of city of, some of that, but parks are planning weighted by itself, even if we were the natural resource, we cannot obtain the city, the, we don't have budgetary discretion, we don't have a staff, you know? We can't make this happen as a planning commission, period.
Right, and that's, that's why I asked the question, was planning commission a goal in the process? It seems to me that our role is subordinate to the city council.
Our department duties are, are all subordinate.
Right, I understand that, and, and so, again, the literal, this is the statement is, obtain it, and if we have the authority to make it happen, and so, you know, support the city commission in their, uh, goal of obtaining free city USA, great, got no problem with that. Whatever we need to review, uh, plans that come across our desk, or, you know, is the street talent correct? Can they change some caliper, whatever, I'm okay with that. Then, but, but then, I get to the next thing, which is, if it's a city commission goal, then do we need to say anything about it? Of course we're gonna support the city commission's goals.
Do you think the city commission needs to say the goal?
Yeah. Then we could say, we could say that we don't agree, and therefore, solid for it, but. Not based on their goals, but. On the previous one, then, yeah.
Just simply state work with.
Support the city board and city's efforts to receive a free city USA designation test.
Sounds good to me.
That's what I was coming from, I was kind of thinking along the same lines that you were, but if a plan was presented, then we can react to it and suggest where it's either appropriate or not, but we're not in a position to be the driver.
Right, I mean, we can't make developers go out and develop.
I disagree that we can't be the driver to, to drive the issue up to city council, that they can implement it. We could still be the driver of, of this goal, of, of our goal of creating a true city USA designation. We just don't have the authority to implement it, but we could still be the driver.
I, I would say we're not the driver, we're the navigator.
Okay, you don't have the engine, you're not.
We can, we can recommend, but, uh, we, we don't have the ability to actually.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd say support the, whatever.
Could, could we, could we, um, you can call it out a revolution, uh, because this is a city commission.
We can only recommend a revolution.
No, we can, we can do a planning commission.
Well, planning commission, I have a planning commission resolution, is there?
We could resolve the planning mission's support.
However. However, based on what the community bidding discussion comes around, it may come back that the city does not want to spend the effort to become a free city USA, that the community does not want to spend that sort of time and resources, they've got other visions, like getting an industry in town. You know, so, you know, I don't know the, I don't know that it would, I'm okay with the goal being support the city's efforts to become free city USA. I don't know that it's necessarily, I would support a revolution, you know, in a couple weeks to urge the city to do it.
Well, and, and that's, that's what I was getting at, uh, I think if we reworded saying obtain it, we could say that we're, we're in a position to support it, or, uh, something of that nature.
Yeah.
Let's support this new's efforts to increase the area.
Yeah, yeah.
And this plan is getting a support statement out, might get the ball rolling if they're, I hiccup with a.
Right.
And, and, you know, the, the point that Damon is just making is, there is a cost component to this, and we can't put our head in sand and, uh, the basic requirement of, if you go to the west, is you have to spend two dollars per person in the city to be in this place. So that's, that's the city council, uh, decision, um, do you want to make a commitment to spend that amount of money every year?
I, I think the fact is that we have that.
Yeah. But it's still.
Yeah, that's beyond our privilege, right? We can, we can state that we're gonna support what they decide to do, but I don't think we can tell them to do that.
Yeah.
Correct.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, yeah. It's just solid for them.
Number five, for example. Number five, Paul Espe is not here, and this was motivated.
I'm not pretty sure why the development got stripped out, I mean, that comes right into our sustainability.
Well, I would, that's what I was gonna say, well, it's not succinctly state lead because it's an identified program, but in a more broad sense, let's.
There's a blank lead that's a single development, yeah.
Well, I, I, we have to actually measure that last time, but it almost means that we need to identify what the standards are. If there are professional associations and industries, but, you know, thrive in development.
There are code standards that are in place right now.
We know, and we probably have other things that are not code, things that are industry driven standards and.
Yeah, like lead is the code, but it's a heck of a really good idea.
Right. You know, Oregon, Oregon has the, the, one of the supreme energy codes in the nation, and if you get into the Oregon energy code, it's, it's, it's very pervasive in, in all aspects of the construction. And, you know, it, it seems like, and there is no structured lead on this, because that's not true, but we can identify, uh, the standards that developers can, can use. Lead is, is a voluntary program. And, and unless you're using, that will still pass. But there are some that apply to everyone that are not voluntary. But I think the Oregon energy code is, it's, it's starting to be, applies to all commercial animals and so forth.
But, what, if it's already code, why would we need to state the, the goal that we're gonna follow code? So, I mean, you know, maybe, you know, encourage greater, you know, uh, sustainable health, uh, developers such as lead, then leave it open to different things, but we've given the, the person an idea of, you know? But again, if I'm a developer and I come and I say, I want to build this building, and there ain't a lick of lead to it, what authority do we have to lead incre-? I mean, we don't have any, like, grant funds to, you know, well, if you recycle materials instead of just bulldozing and dumping them in the landfill, uh, we'll give you, you know, uh, fifty percent tax payment or something, I mean, we don't, we'll, we'll forgive you your SECs, I mean, we don't have that authority. And so.
But, but we are saying, I promote and educate is pretty basic, I mean, we don't have to incentivize.
You know, I'm, I'm wondering, yeah, the city doesn't have access to, uh, professional resources, an expert. So, so I'm, there are some things in this paragraph, and perhaps that becomes one of these three, um, presentations that we, that we brought up.
What is, what is sustainable mean, or something like that?
Well, I, I think you can get into more specifics of that, I, I know for a fact that there are not code ordinances, but, um, s- standards for energy efficiency for, uh, buildings of different sizes and scale. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a, uh, an area of, of, that requires specific, special expertise, and people have that experience, I don't have it. Uh, but I know that people do, and that's, that's one component of it, the idea of, of smart growth is another idea, and I think that the person that you get that's gonna talk to you about, uh, what type of energy efficient standards we should be aiming at, can't talk us about smart growth. So, maybe this is about educating us, maybe it's to base that, um, that in our code, we can identify things that would require a developer to implement energy efficiencies, efficiencies. And if they, if they were able to develop their building to, uh, a higher specification, perhaps they get some, some discount on development fees or something like that, but I, I, I think that we need to know about this, and.
Yeah, and, and I was.
I would suggest actually that most of the programs are already in place, it's more a matter, uh, in the, in the sense of identifying what they are and where those resources are promoted. Because there, there are, uh, incentives for compliance with different levels of, uh, energy efficiency, site development standards that, uh, you know, a developer can take advantage of. And I, you know.
I think that would be a.
We're, we're doing a project, uh, near Bridgeport, and there are incentives for, uh, you know, storm drainage and other aspects of building development that, uh, there are rewards available for. We don't necessarily have to, um, establish something new.
Right.
It's just making people aware.
We're talking about promoting energy.
If we could all, if we could sit here, you know, and everything we had at the work session, and it was brought back, incentive program, incentivized programs out there, grants out there, and we're able to put all that on one page, and if a homeowner came in or a developer came in and said, hey, you know, by the way, we've put all, here, here's, here's all the links, here's the application, here's the contact info, you know, that would do wonders in terms of our ability to provide information.
And then like, and then right now, if you, uh, and I don't know how long this incentive was for, but if you own a house and you replace, uh, non-energy efficient windows with more energy efficient windows, there was some tax thing, a tax. So there's things like that out there right now, we don't necessarily have to make them up.
Well, and, and, I would find that a lead training, or an energy efficiency training.
There with that language, really, this language, promote and educate.
I think if you ask energy trust to make a small presentation, they'll probably do it.
But I would like to get sustainability into this statement.
We have to agree on what that is, and I don't think that there is agreement across the board on that. I, I have a real.
I, I'd like going back to just if we had something on one page that would be usable to the public, or just a short little clip that some general citizen can watch, or a builder, that would be really the fruit of the land. Not so much of what we're gonna get directly out of it.
I think, you know, and I see, you know, this, this deals with water and something in recycling, stormwater, skinny streets, bio soils on streets, deals with public zone water, I mean, you know, I think this can have just a larger context of our decision making and moving forward with the visioning or concept line, or if I suddenly rewrite the code, keep those in mind, in ours, in our minds, while we're making those decisions, or trying to pull up the ideas or pull the. I mean, consulting is so technical, it's not gonna be very helpful for the vast majority of the population. And if I can, energy credits on a brand building, I've had many folks out there building brand building, you know, a commercial building, uh, but, but, but if we had the resources available, we could during pre-al, say, hey, you know, you can go here, and that, that would be helpful.
My big fear is that, I don't, my personal experience is that while people, the energy trust do a great job, they have not seen, if training people on how to appropriately make recommendations when you have an older building, and I'm not talking about one bit of this to solve, I'm talking about something that predates World War Two, because there are different ways that you can mess that up really badly, and I was talking about it about work thing, where someone suggested that they fill the cavity of their nineteen thirty building with insulating foam, well, that may be energy efficient, but they're probably never gonna be able to live in that house again, because it's gonna create a moisture problem, and then it's gonna create mold, and then that's gonna cause deterioration, and so, there's a whole bunch of things, that's very, very specific. But there are, you know, I'd say the city came tomorrow and said to me, oh, we're gonna put bio soils on your street. While I understand consecutively that they might help with storm drainage, on the other hand, I live in a historic neighborhood, and I mean, if bio soils are appropriate, then that could be your neighborhood.
Right, it should be torn up, but it should be mud tracked with corduroy going up the, or.
We actually concrete block them.
No.
When my house was built, there was a sidewalk in the front, we were building the street.
There's a sidewalk in the front, but.
It wasn't, it wasn't a, uh, walkway with slats like a head cam.
Obviously, one design doesn't fit every requirement, city and our certain construction, contact, or a little bit of focus, but for that majority of the new construction that you're gonna see, the stormwater may just suck up, it's, it's, it's gonna continue to escalate because we inherited a lot of those stuff.
Yeah, and I, and I think.
And, and, you know, I, I, what I'd like to see is, ways that we can make those ponds something other than a fenced off, cattail farm. We need to, we need to get to a region. Yeah, I mean.
Or because it's called children, like, longer than the ground, you know?
Oh, darn, gee, Darwin at work, sorry.
Protecting ourselves from ourselves.
Yeah, I know, and at a certain point, you know, not everybody. Yeah, I know, and at a certain point, you know, not everybody can walk, I mean, I don't know if anybody's ever seen the there's a little one page cartoon of, of the worker in full OSHA gear and he basically looks like a, uh, a spaceman with training wheel things so he can't fall over, you know, and and it's like, you know, that's just not practical and.
But heading back to, uh, number five, we're in train, uh. Were we at a point where, uh, we could identify a way that we're promoting this in the area and we had some discussion about? But it means to do these things, but.
I'd like to just be educated on a lot of these things. I don't know how, you know, probably a third of the programs that are out there. Well, and.
A lot, a lot active.
And a lot of them come and go. I understand that, but.
I don't really understand exactly what number five is. Maybe the title of the urban planning, that does, that doesn't necessarily mean the words effort don't necessarily mean that. Gee, it kinda gets back to, as Charles said earlier, number five really relates back to number one. You know, we're gonna be, we're gonna try to educate.
Actually, I think it relates to two more than to one. Do we want grids that everybody can find their way around or do we want swings, reeks going back and forth around grand old oaks?
I mean, you had the grocery store in your neighborhood, you had pharmacies in your neighborhood, you could walk all that week, you know. We don't have main street communities anymore. We have dispersed communities. I just had a lady the other day at the nail salon and she said, oh, I am so glad to be out of Tiger. You know, there's kinda nothing going on there and I really like working in the city, so I got there where she lived. And I, and it was a subdivision that, you know, in my time, but she says she lives at Central Point and it's one of those first subdivisions there to the left somewhere and I didn't recognize the name. And she says, oh yeah, it's just so much more little. I thought, well, you have to draw everywhere you go, you know, you're not.
But the kids can play in the street.
Yeah, and that, and she was talking about how, you know, livable her neighborhood was and I thought, yeah, well, you should drive from a fair downtown to go to the nail salon and but yeah, I mean, so it was all matters to give over her and I was happy that she, you know, liked, you know, working in the city.
Well, there's, it, I, I think there's really two components of number five. One is the, the, uh, energy, uh, and, uh, the, the, the things that relate to, uh, as Tony was saying, strong, uh, management and site development that, uh, there could be an education component. Some of that, I think, you know, when, uh, we were talking about that last time, really is a subset of my tool. Vision, because when you start talking about how you're going to, uh, address zoning issues for a lot of communities, that's, that's part of that community vision.
I think the way that was up on two was that we were gonna revisit it. At the point that the city commission is on, but there are both lots of places.
I think one's up here and then there are. One's really broad and the other one is a little more focused on what's our role in promoting and educating folks on what, I mean, insert what issue we.
I I would like to suggest that we direct Tony to, like, uh, to target one of the three presentations that we'll have for this sustainability urban planning issue. In terms of educating us about, um, smart growth, uh, energy efficiency development.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you got spark vote in post. What's that mean?
Right.
I mean, uh, I am the citizen representative. I'm not a professional.
And when we began, like, somebody, I apologize that, uh, that Paul Estre wasn't here because I think this Paul actually offered it to us.
Well, I don't have an objection to it staying as it is, even though it's a strikeout, preserving the concept for Paul to, you know, deal with it. I just.
I'd love to do that. I'd love to hear what his thought on that. Um, number six is other projects and programs and so we begin with the economic development and.
Well, real, real quick, there, there is, after looking at it, I think under two, the community vision, I know what kind of the unit is, but I think where it lists South End Concept Plan Area. I'd kinda like to just strike out South, uh, South End and do concept plan areas. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's South End or Park Place or whatever, we need to work with, you know, the vision for those areas.
Those are just examples, right?
Yeah, those are actual project names that need to be developed.
Right, but we have other concept plan areas, you know, so Beaver Creek's still alive.
This is the two thousand eleven. So what do we have on your number six? We have Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. We have South End Road Concept Plan and is there another one?
They have something in twice, by the way, because you have it up in six, down two, and you have it down there, so. Is it the Beaver Creek Road?
Community vision and I'm assuming the other is more specific than us is that.
Well, I think that, you know, two with that, two with that after, after these, after Roslar is down there. Those are carryovers. Some of those are carryovers from previous goals.
Yeah, everything in the bottom is the castle.
Either in the city commission's goals and objectives or our current programs that we need to accomplish or grants that we have out there. We carried over sign codes and we seem to put that on every year.
And that's, uh, that was where I was going with this is I'd really like us to, to put something down about, you know, produce a comprehensive new sign code by the end of twenty twelve. It's eighteen months away and it's just, it's always the, it's always the thing that gets pushed back because something else is more important.
What, what about scoping out that kind of a project so that the goal for twenty eleven is to have a plan for doing a sign code and the plan of, uh, how much it's gonna cost and how long it's gonna take? It seems to me it's a, it's a big confidence about that. It's gonna take a lot of time. It's gonna take a lot of money. And it seems like you're talking about something that, that is that big. You could probably use this year to start to some preliminary planning.
I'm not going to do it. I requested it. They said no.
Yeah.
One of my recommended goals is to submit to it on.
So, uh, but, but what Carter's saying is you'd have the preliminary of this is what the budget is, this is how much time it's gonna take. And then come budget time next year, we can say, this is an issue for planning commission. We're seeing violations left and right because no, you know, A, there's not enforcement ability and B, there's, there's conflicts in the sign code. This needs to get fixed. If we're gonna have a livable, sustainable community, not full of aprons and manners, so.
Can I take that right there is the comment? I'm a little weary to spend a whole lot of time and resources and money putting together. I mean, I have an idea.
You have an outline.
I have it broken down right to the dollar now.
No.
No, I don't think we need that. If you have.
I think if we just keep pushing.
Is that something that you could share with us? Your outline? It doesn't have to have dollars, tax or anything like that. I mean, put it down as a confidence.
So looking between two and three thousand man hours, we're looking between five and ten thousand dollars. I mean, it's just, I, I know I'm talking about teen time, you know, but I'm just saying as examples of, you know, because I don't, you know, it seems to me like there's each one guy sits down and starts, I don't know, even interlocking and.
That's a bigger discussion because in, in my world, it's a, it's a large confidence of educational reasons. You write the code versus, yeah, I sit down in my office and create a sign code, you know, three days.
Oh yeah, we could do that.
I would rather take another approach of community involvement, but, um, until we get to the go ahead.
Well, if you look at under number six, almost everything on number six is either related to item one or two. So, uh, without the, uh, direction from the city also to move ahead, this items or, or the funding to allow you to move ahead with, with, with the handout and impact.
And I think some of this too is just, uh, was a reminder of some of the project commitments that we have that are going to move forward.
So they don't fall off the table.
Right, or for example, co-finance, stabilization, erosion, or any, uh, that was one of the goals for the natural resource committee based on the city commission's goals and objectives this year. So while the planning commission may not be involved with it, we will be out of planning. So this is also to demonstrate that, you know, my three planners have other work products that are gonna somewhat constrain the ability to, how much we can do with the planning mission level. You know, transportation system plan is only to move forward. One of my planners is gonna be running that, you know, uh, reforestation of public lands. Pete Walters is working on that. Or yeah, Pete and Scott. Well, we're, it'll be one out of the natural resources committee.
Okay.
Um, downtown circulation plan, you know, we'll know probably within the next couple of weeks if we receive that grant from Odette.
So is this something we can just leave hanging as is?
Well, I think, right, I think part of it was, was to, to get out there that there, let the workload of the departments and that we're running our staff to be able to tackle too many more problems.
Can you revise this? Could you please put something, so for instance, downtown circulation plan, either a footnote or something? Because that would, that, in my looking at this, that would, I knew you mentioned before I made a note about, but for instance, if people have a little footnote there, we have applied for a grant, blah, 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 blah. So South End Concept Plan, uh, we are, we have committed to that go to do, blah, 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 blah. So if there are other things behind these that we are not aware of, you know, transportation system plan, next update do da, da, da. So there's, it isn't just, okay, there's this list. There are some things, as you said, that are work plan products so that maybe that's, I think we're to be hopeful to know that.
Right. Cause you go out here.
You know, reforestation of public finance programs, so next year when we do the, um, citywide cleanup, maybe we have a tree, we have a tree planting crew. We go up and, you know, people plant trees instead of weeds. I mean, it seems to me that, that would be like a easy project.
So, so I think going back to number one, public involvement, um, we talked about, uh, a program where we're going through other kinds of workshops and presentations at planning commission meetings, uh, the internal newsletter and identify three topics that we can address. So that could be those three newsletters coming out, uh, community vision. We're going to wait for, uh, city commissioners to look at their approach and then try to look at that. Um, the city agencies communication, um, we're going to issue communications from the planning commission through, through, uh, other city commissions and boards. Um, inviting Iowa to talk about topical issues of interest and.
And request for report.
A request for report.
Right, that's what I thought we were gonna do. We need to give opportunity for report what's going on.
I will include that in the. A report, um, there is, we believe, uh, Tree City where some. And as far as urban planning, we want, uh, to leave that open for Paul to get a chance to, pharmacies, services, and he was. Uh, number six, the other projects and programs, um, are placeholder for our part plans. There has, can some activity, it's heard on these things, it's trying to update that, only in the basis of this. So, so that, so can we move to, um, uh, work session R and A, planning mission introduction? And, um, I guess I'll begin. I started working on it in two thousand and six. Um, and I wanted to be able to, uh, have fun, learn something and try to make a difference. Uh, in making Oregon City a better place to live and, uh, my background on, on project managers or, uh, information on projects. So.
You're gonna have fun.
I'm gonna have fun and I'm gonna try to make a difference.
It is working and out.
And I'm on something and I think that were a lot of things.
Where's the need for you?
Oh, I need to throw that away.
Who's the people?
I, uh, started serving on the, uh, planning mission, uh, last year in February. And, uh, I, uh, just wanted to get more involved in the city, uh, planning process, a little bit more connected. By a project as a, as an architect, uh, thirty some years of experience added something to all of the process. So, um, felt like it would be a, a good public service and, uh, way to extend my own presence. For anyone who's interested in that, plus copy.
I, I don't know how long you lived here and, and what area do you live in. I know where you live. It's not specific, but I don't know how long you lived here.
I don't know either.
I moved here in two thousand and one.
In the, what neighborhood association are you a member of?
I live up at, um, in Farlow Press, Park Press.
Gravel roads or neither.
I've lived in the former city since eighteen seventy seven. I currently live in, uh, Vista Tower, I believe, or British. Apparently, we just had a person being asked weekly this past month.
Is it Vista Tower or Tower of Vista?
Tower of Vista.
Hi, uh, let's see. I have, uh, I'm a fourth generation Oregon City resident. I guess I should say I lived here since nineteen seventy one. I landed on the earth two blocks away here at the old hospital, um, and I joined the commission, I think, same, same exact time as, as Carter in two thousand and six, spurred out of conversation or a series of conversations I had with, uh, Ben Merron Norris, about what the direction of the city, where we should be going as a city. And she promptly put it right back on me and, and said that she had an opinion in the, uh, planning commission and I should really put my opinions to use, so. So I did do that. Uh, I've had a great experience working, working here with folks. Um, professionally, I'm a union, uh, representative for the United Food and Water Workers Local Five Five Five. Had experience with a few other units before that and, uh, worked with, uh, lobby firm and, uh, with member of Congress Darlene Hooly before that, so that's my background. And I live up, up in the South End Neighborhood Association near, um, she's cool.
She's got her own, uh, consultant firm now with, um, it's a Hooly and Nato on her card that she gave.
That's probably.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was the Nato sold the family or the Nato sold the family.
She's probably definitely a pizza neighbor there. That's the same crap. Uh, I think, maybe, uh, if you know, I got here really recently, but, uh, I've lived in Oregon cities since nineteen sixty three when I was born. Top of the hill and I'm afraid to move again because every time I've moved, I started seventh and, and Jackson. And every time I've moved, I've moved closer to the hospital and now there's a hospice there and I'm only two blocks away, so I can't move. Um, I got a brief reprieve. I moved to the third block, but anyway, um, and, uh, I kinda always, and I kept my ear to the grindstone. I, I made the joke about how, being the second city hall, I remember my dad back in the late sixties and says, you know, taking me there and saying, this is where it really happens. And the mayor would sit at one booth and the two commissioners would sit at the other booths and people would work their way up the chain to decide how a position was gonna be done. Um, and. Well, you could because, because that was what everybody did, so that was the atmosphere, so it was no problem, but, um, well, and I was also below the level, but anyway, um, uh, ran off during the Navy for a few years, went around the world, saw how bad things could be, especially after living in LA. Um, then came back and where I was a union rep for local four eighty three. Uh, while I was here, I was a five 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 of a basis number one, which no longer exists. Um, and, uh, got roped into being on the city commission because said, hey, nobody else is there and nobody is running for the position, do it. So I did and, uh, I won. Um, and so I did that for four years and while I was there, I saw, I got, I was particularly more, uh, into what I noticed was there's two factions in this city that are constantly at war. There's the Eagles and the Turtles. And depending on who's in power, we're either Turtles or Eagles in this city, which is why we go. And depending on who's in power, we're either Turtles or Eagles in this city, which is why we go left and right, and left and right, and backwards and up. And I kind of saw myself as a, as a turkey, I can fly for a little while and then I bump my ass, and I can fly for a little while, but, um, and kind of mediating between the two groups, but, um, you know, my concern is that we, we're turtles way too long and, um, you know, we needed to keep moving forward and. Uh, you know, I've worn for years, the mill's not going to be there forever and, you know, some of the Turtles said, it'll always be there, it's always been there. And so, that's why something like our, you know, community goals are all about promote industry, promote industry, promote industry, nobody did that. We didn't need to because we had a dump and we had the mill, which will always be here. You know, and when I was growing up, the mill employed over eight hundred people. And downtown was thriving because as each of the three ships got off, they went and did things downtown. So, you know, I watched the city turning into a ghost town in what I, it's our old city, which was, you know, five thousand people when I started. And, uh, so my goal of getting on the planning commission was to, you know, so what we can do about bringing new, new things to the city, integrate, you know, but when I was here, there was Oregon City residents, there was River Crest residents. And they were different, they were River Crestians, and I see the same thing kind of happening now, now it's Oregon, and there's the people who live at Cappy Lee. You know, and, and that one, they, who don't even, you know, except driving down ninety nine, don't know anything about downtown. Because they have no connection to it, and, and they take two thirteen and go to the mall there, they take ninety nine and go into Portland. Um, and that's, you know, some of the stuff I found campaigning was, you know, do you know what, what Seventh Street is? No, you know where Mall Avenue is? Uh, yeah, that's the one that goes in front of the freeway, right? Yeah, you know, I mean, that's, that's the sort of disconnect that there is in this city, so when you talk about community vision, um, it's, you know, I mean, that wasn't a hundred percent common, but I, I encountered that, um, you know, and. The Park Place people who still think they're a completely different city and resent the fact that they had to get annexed in, um, you know, it's, it's. You know, we need a community vision, but I don't know if we can get it because there's still silos, there's still insular little groups. Uh, there's still Turtles and there's still Eagles, and, uh, so, that's why I'm here.
Well, I didn't grow up here, um, I grew up in San Angeles.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you brought it up. I moved to Oregon when I was eighteen, um, I'd owned my house for the last five years, I'm in River Crest. Uh, my parents are in Beaver Creek though, um, my background, I ran, um, and owned rental car businesses. I owned three stores closing about a year ago, uh, to be with my little boy's going to be two in October. Um, my wife's an Oregon City teacher, she's taught at four schools, the S R, she'll be at Holcomb next year, she was at King last year. Um, not going anywhere, um, and I'm working on the MBA in sustainability, just want to do the energy steward program through the county, and I'm.
We have to know this.
Yeah, that's what I do.
I have a president.
I have volunteer hours, I need to log, you know. Um, and beyond that, I, planning commission was just a place to, to be, to look back because I feel like I'm kind of involved in the community just in a roundabout. Dialogue way and, you know, it's just legitimate.
Well, thank you. Oh, do you have the one that didn't want to go first? Denise.
Well, I had to do that, I was going to say, that's, that's the, that's the sign of the toast we have. Well, I have lived in the city of Oregon since nineteen seventy five. I have been in a lot of different communities by choice. And we ended up in Oregon City in nineteen eighty eight by default. My husband was going to be working in Salem and I was working here, and we tried to find a place in between. And we kind of ended up in Charvin, although it was sort of soulless, and I didn't really want to live in Charvin though. Or Rosenville, nothing against that, I actually lived there. And it was suggested by my husband's family that we move out near S K, which is where they're from, and I didn't want to live there either. I said, I guess we're going to live in Oregon City. And my husband was, uh, born in the, in Oregon City there, John Q and Six, that the, which used to be the Ida Hutchinson Hospital, so I didn't know which hospital you were talking about.
Oregon City.
Seven, the Oregon City Hospital been from, uh, seven eleven.
Now retirement.
No, it was in my house, yeah, okay, and that, that one, okay, so he was born in that old one. And I first came to Oregon City for the first time in nineteen seventy three, which was quite a different town. I remember walk, parking, walking down Main Street with my husband, I, that's when I first met Morgan Seal. Met the Seal's Man Shop, and I still think of that building as, as Mr. Seal's Man Shop. Uh, I was great for drugs at school downtown, uh, I even think it was school of rural, not roots, but there were another rural start that. Gardner, Richard Hammond was still there, uh, the Liberty Theater was still there, and you could actually go in there and see movies. And I was very excited to be in here. And here, the first house, place we lived was in, um, Barkley Hills Drive and the. Seven, seven, five, Decade Avenue, because that was pretty much the only apartment center in town. But it was nice, we had a third floor car, lived in the back with the porch, had your train coming every day and, uh, wasn't fun shopping up there, but that's where we lived, and so we started looking for a house and. To show you how things come full circle, one of our planning commissioners, Harry Dyer, and said, oh, you're looking for a house? And so he started taking around houses on the weekend and we, and I looked at one in Hall Street in Klima. But when I went downstairs, the ceiling was only about seven feet tall and I felt, so he didn't buy that house. And the house that I really wanted to buy, my father-in-law came and looked at it and said, no, you don't want to buy this house, he's going to crave it for the county. And we ended up with the house that we, that we have owned for, uh, twenty two years. My husband is from originally from Blackness County, which, again, there's more family size there and, uh, we now have two members of the family born, or it's my son and my husband. And I, uh, really enjoyed working for the city while I was there, it was very exciting, we had two staff. And, uh, they just formed a community development department, and so we had a director, building official planning, two planning people, one building guy, and one city engineer, that was it. Of course, Oregon City was only around nine thousand, and I thought that's a great size for a town, I know now we're closer to thirty. And I'm starting to feel a little bit of a disconnect because it's kind of feeling a little too big to me. When I first started at the city, we were doing a comprehensive plan update, I think every planner gets to do one about. Three or four times, and after you get to your third time, you say, I don't want to do it anymore, so you may be at your limit.
There are ones though, Bart.
Okay, well, good. But we had all these neighborhood associations at the time, and I met a lot of really neat, neat people who I still see in the community from all over, um, the neighborhoods, some of them. And we did go to hell very seldom after planning commission, with people like Lane Wolsey and like Mulkey and Don Better, and I mean, you know, some of the. I guess some of the more progressive people, but it's, um, I guess I've just always been really. Involved because I, I guess I come from that background of, you know, that whole Kennedy thing of asking not what you do for your country that. You know, you can't really brag about it if you don't get involved, so it's kind of been my thing. I've been in two iterations of the McLaughlin neighborhood now, the first, when I first moved here, I would go to the East, even though I was the staff. And then we came back in nineteen ninety seven and reconstituted ourselves and that's been very rewarding, I've known a lot of people and. It's kind of nice when you walk around your neighborhood and people know you and you know them and. Very community oriented, although I went to Paige's the other day and ran into three people that I know, but I don't go up there that often, but. I still think of Oregon City as a small town and I think it's okay, it's small. I wouldn't, I don't know if it, because of the fifty cat lines, don't know if it covers a lot of the Oregoners, just kind of getting through a few bit. I do like, I do like the town, I do, I like your analogy of turtles and eagles, I never thought of it that way, I considered that, I, um. I am a lifelong, uh, public employee, I did start out that way, but it ended up that way, and I am. Concentrating, uh, retiring because I had enough time in, and that I want to do something else, maybe more involvement, maybe. Travel a little bit, it's still.
You could retire and then be the city's, uh, company's planning consultant.
I feel a little bit of that now, but I don't charge people, I'll do a little consulting on a side, I don't, sure.
Good, see, that's even better, Steve, you're good.
I'm very excited about downtown Main Street, I did some volunteering for them already in the last two years, and now that I see Terry Coward, who used to be the chairman of the planning commission, I want to work here. I'll have to call her and see how that's going to go. Okay, I like this town, this kind of, I kind of feel like I've adopted it after. Such a long time, it's the longest place I've ever lived, ever in my entire life.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I guess thank everybody for all the sharing and, uh, and Tony, thank you very much for, um, just sort of taking that moment. All right, we meet you there.